All right, it is six o'clock. We'll go ahead and get started. Thank you all for coming. We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. We will waive the pledge for the purpose of trying. I'll go ahead and call the roll call in the absence of the clerk. Mensen?
Yes.
Sarason?
Here.
And Trump?
Yes.
We do have a forum with the Republican State Department. We have that. We will waive the citizen comments to the end. I would seek approval of the agenda as submitted.
So moved.
Moved by Mensen. Seconded by Sarason. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Motion carries. Okay, before we get started, thank you to our city attorney for attending. Appreciate that. And then also, if you -- Also at any time, Mr. Dragon, if you want to interject or anything on anything we're doing, please feel free to do so. We appreciate the guidance you have for this process. So 5A is acceptance of the resignation of Sharon Robertson. If you were -- members are unaware, last Friday, myself and Councilman Sarason did have the opportunity to stop up and see Sharon before she left, both for some administrative items and to wish her well. She did sign her notice of separation with the city. I've provided that information for you, so you had an idea of how many hours she had on hand and her current pay rate. Hopefully you've had an opportunity to review that. If you've not, you can get the additional copies this evening. That was part of the email. So, any questions or comments about item 5A? I'm going to have to counsel on it. Okay. Then I'm going to seek a motion to officially accept the resignation of the city clerk.
I move that we accept Sharon's resignation as of Friday, the 26th.
Moved by Sarason.
Moved by the motion.
Seconded by Mensen. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. The motion carries. All right. 5B, discussion and approve the replacement process for the city clerk's position. I've also sent some administrative items out on this just for a process to do so. I think that we should get it posted right away. Most commonly, we can put it in the paper if we want. I'll be open to any ideas from the council for this. The most common forms that we use in the city of Cedar Rapids are indeed.com and the corridor, career corridors. Those seem to produce the best for us, but I would be open to any comments from the council for that.
I guess I think it means the Central City papers are normal paper that we put our legal notices in. I think we should put it in there.
In front of the Len newsletter?
Yes.
So they had the Len newsletter.
Does ClerkNet have something for League of Cities?
I have no idea.
I can speak to that. If you throw it out there, yes, it will -- everyone across the state that's on ClerkNet will see it. And I don't think it's an ad. I think you just post.
I think that'd be a good way to do that. And does League of Cities ad still advertise?
I don't know that, but I could find out.
Don't you get a monthly?
Yeah, they send -- I was going through emails today just to see that there was anything we needed. They send out a newsletter all the time.
I'm a member. I can contact him as well. So the Len newsletter, ClerkNet, and then contact the League of Cities as well for posting as well as any objection to indeed.com and Career Careers.
Is there cost to buy either of those?
I don't know. I have memberships on both, but I haven't posted anything in so long that I would have to go back. But I will find that out and get that information. That's the application process. Then for testing, normally for administrative processes or things like that, we do -- obviously, hired a lot of people over the years for my current position, but I'd be also interested in the opinion of anyone, but certainly the senior council members of what testing took place the last time or things like that. But we do testing for Microsoft Word and typing tests and things like that for all administrative level positions. I think that that would probably be a good idea, but again, I'd be open to any comments from council on that. At what level of testing?
I see nothing with that.
Yeah, you do this more than I do.
Everything, I'll see anything with that.
So at least Word, Excel, and a typing test, is that favorable to everybody?
It is. It would be nice if they had something in our system that we use for billing and that too.
For the financial system as well.
Right.
You could put that in. Is that right? Because I'm knowledgeable about -- I can't remember what the name of your software is.
Data, data tech.
Data tech, yes. I'd be knowledgeable on it.
We normally go minimum words per minute at 40. Is that acceptable also?
That cuts me out.
Okay, very good. That brings it down to the interview process. This process was put out, but what's the pleasure of the council on the interview process? Normally, there's a hiring supervisor and potentially members of the council or members, city employees, or members from the public, or some process like that. And I'll also be interested in the legal opinion on this as well since we're elected officials. So any comments on the interview process once the application process is brought down after testing?
Well, like, I've talked to Bethany about this. I've been interviewed three times in my entire life. It's not something I'm real familiar with. So if there are other members of the council that want to be a part of that, I understand, but I really don't think I bring anything to the table.
Well, I would like to see everybody take a first cut at the -- all of the applications and taking number one, two, three, four. And it probably would be a good idea to cover the names so that we're having -- we're not looking for the most popular person. We're looking for the best requirements. And then after that point, if we want to go ahead and do your -- after everybody looks at them, we double review how everybody rated them, and then take the X number of those, whatever you want, whatever we decide. If it's 10, maybe it ought to be 5. Whatever. And then go ahead and have what you talked about, have a couple of minutes.
Right, interview process?
At least do the interview process, pick them out, and then have the whole council go on.
I'd be comfortable having the whole council sit in on the interview because I think you'd get more people looking and evaluating that person.
Opinion on a public -- that makes it a public meeting at that form, I think. Maybe, maybe not. I don't know. The definition of meeting on that is conducting business, but we definitely have a forum if we do that.
You do. But the issue or the threshold becomes then, is it ministerial or is it deliberative? And if we're taking information, there's an argument that, hey, this is a ministerial meeting and we're doing this to gather information. No deliberation. But at the point you deliberate, then for sure, that will be a public meeting. But I can get you a more formal opinion on that. Once you get all of your resumes or applications in and say, you know, this pledge of the council is to have everyone meet, or maybe it's not everyone, maybe it's three of the four and the mayor, we can design a process for you that would be compliant with the Iowa Open Meetings law.
One other thing I think we need looking is make sure these people are bondable.
Sure. I think that will --
Because that's where we run into a situation. Can you really help me remember? We had one, we had one.
Well, we had two of them.
All picked out to hire. They were not bondable.
Yeah.
Their requirements were excellent, but they just --
Well, we'll -- table of the interview process, I think, until we get that opinion from you. But that brings up D, unless you want to talk about interview more, but D is the reference background checks. Go ahead.
No, are we going to have a set application on this so everybody's running the same application? I can run D. How do you -- you put a form out there and have them fill that out?
Yeah. And when you put stuff on Indeed, it has almost like a wizard that you answer the questions through, ask the type of the government, what the job description is, the title, the pay rate, the things like that. So you answer these questions like that and then it gets posted. What I've found with Indeed is, so as an example, I hired dispatchers or administrative folks. You get a ton of responses, all right? I'll get like, I'll post a position, I'll get 90 responses from Indeed. But because it looks for keyword searches, you'll find that the vast majority of them are probably not what you want because it's an automatic process. People post their resumes or they post their info and say, automatically apply me for these positions. So many of them are good, people that really looked through, picked it and did it through Indeed because they have such a broad base, and then many of them are automatically put in.
So there's not actually an application, right? It just submits resumes?
Well, no, it'll -- if people put their information out there to autofill it, it will submit it.
Right. What Joe's saying is, we don't then ask them to answer certain questions of ours. They just submit a resume.
When you put in your criteria on Indeed, you can put in as much or as little as you want, but it fills that out for you and that's what they see.
So it's not like a structured application?
It also hits for keyword searches.
So if we use the old fashioned way and use a newspaper and somebody responds to that, are we going to have an application ready for those people to complete?
Yes. You're talking like if somebody sees it in the Len newsletter, they thought a regular application, certainly. We could do that with an application, or we could just say, submit your resume, but usually you have to have an application process attached to it.
I was going to say, on Indeed, I think you can, once they apply and upload their resume, I think you can put in a series of questions that kind of qualifies them. I think that is an option for a person that's looking to hire, a company looking to hire. We've done that with the co-op.
Yeah. With the city, we filter them down to --
Yeah, and exactly. It acts as a filter. So I think you do have that option. I don't know what the cost is to it.
You slip through under administrative or something like that. You know, something like that. And some people fill things out because they have to apply for so many jobs, maybe in unemployment situations, something like that. So you always have a few that get through, but just be prepared for that with Indeed. But you do get very good applicants that way as well.
There's a way to do that.
What's your timeframe on applications, when you want to close?
Well, we post for two weeks normally, but if you can, on the pleasure of the council.
I'd say two weeks and then reevaluate how many viable candidates we have and determine if we need to extend that.
That's a good point.
Can I?
You can go until filled, but that's a --
I don't know when you're going to have your conversation about wage, but that has to be decided before you put that application because with Scott, that was an issue. There was no discussion about wage before the hiring process started and it became an issue. So just wanted to throw that out there.
I did submit an updated job application with a pay scale, but it's not been decided. That'll be a -- it's another bullet point to discuss.
I had one other thing on the interviewing process. So where I work, we use what we call behavioral interviewing. So rather than asking more closed-ended or really direct questions, you ask them to tell about a time. So for instance, because they're going to work with the public, tell me about a time that you had an angry customer and how did you deal with that? And the other thing we recommend is using the same set of questions for every interview as well. So I could help throw together a packet or throw out some of those types of questions, and then we would build a packet that whoever's interviewing, we base off of that and we try not to stray from it too far so that you have a consistent picture of everybody.
That's what we do at where I work, and I understand exactly what you mean by having it consistent with everybody.
And those behavioral questions, you get a really good picture of who they really are.
Yeah, we did the same thing. And the reference or background, of course, we run for public safety, we run very detailed backgrounds, so we can't do that same level, but I would think certainly we could do the reference portion of it and up to the bonding portion and even financial to a certain extent, but I'd be open to any other suggestions for that.
With the background checks you're talking about, I know like where I work, they go as far as I have to straggle their last, they do criminal background checks. Is that part of what you're talking about?
Well, you'd have to have, and again, legal can jump in here anytime they want. You could have the person sign a waiver that would allow you to do much more, but as far as criminal histories, we can't run those without some type of cooperation from the candidate.
I think we could draft a, you know, you could put it out there, subject to appropriate background check, and then we could draft releases that would allow you to, if you are concerned about, for instance, something to be pretty sensitive about would be their credit background. We would need an authorization in order to conduct a Fair Credit Reporting Act background check on that. And usually you use a third party to do that, but you'll want to make sure you've got the authorization and release, and that's not a problem. We can handle that part of it, but we don't do the background checks on it. But if you want that, I would suggest that, given the sensitivity of this position and what flows in and out of this office.
Question for Jessica. Do you remember who we had? Was it the insurance company or the same company the bank uses here?
I think the insurance company took care of it, if I remember correctly, for the bonding part.
Well, they could do their background checks. That's the way I recall it.
Yeah, that's kind of what I thought, but I could be mistaken. It's been a while ago.
Is that maybe something that the League of Cities or the ICMA or someone like entity like that could assist you with as well? You know, they do that regularly, so they may have some resources for you. We have a third-party service that does financial affairs, but I don't think it matters in this point of places that do it.
Will you find out about the bonding with the insurance company?
We just went through it. We were going to get the bond for the insurance company. And with the bond, they took care of that, of course.
And the references, it's just through the application process usually, but we can dig a little deeper.
And of course, the drug testing and that, that's just standard.
Yeah. So the background, reference background, then we do a conditional job offer, and then that's when they have to, a conditional offer is pending the drug testing medical.
Right.
And then the final portion being the hiring, and that's where we'll also have to negotiate whatever pay or benefits package. That being said.
Can they say, can we say that the pay is dedicated or whatever to the amount of their capabilities, their, their -- can you help me?
Some experience?
Yeah, background experience or whatever.
Background experience.
I did email out the pay chart and set it at a grade eight, which is the current amount that it's, or close to what she's making now, just under. We don't have to do pay charts. I'm not saying that it has to go that way because we don't use them right now. We did introduce these last year to council, but we ended up going with a percentage piece. But the advantage of the pay chart, of course, is the person knows exactly the range that they start at and they end at. And normally, pay charts, I've seen a one-for-one year, but normally it's like a two-for-one based upon that background experience you're talking about. And so if they come in, they normally start at a step one, which a grade eight, step one is $18.58 an hour. The only way that they could increase on those steps is to come in and say, hey, look, I've got 10 years' experience. So at two to one, that's going to be a step five to start. Or if they come in and say, I'm already a clerk with this amount of experience, I'm already bonded, I'm already been through the clerk school, municipal clerk school, then they could --
We can copy that.
Sure. Then they could come in at a higher rate. You could also, if you feel like 1851 was too high to start, you could lower that grade up to a seven, six, whatever. The number below it is just the overtime rate, and I would suggest making this a bargaining position with their overtime eligibility, one of the salary position. But you don't have to do it that way. That's up to the council. But normally, people feel more comfortable with knowing what their starting and ending rates are and what that progression cycle is. It's very common, and if, especially in elected positions where people could change, they still are guaranteed their rates, yes, sir.
He's talking about the question of overtime. I mean, is a straight four-hour a week job as exempt or non-exempt? Which would it be? Non-exempt?
Yeah, well, it's classified as non-exempt. I think there's a possibility that, I mean, given the duties requirements, and I haven't thoroughly gone through the job description, that this could be classified as an exempt position. So it'd be exempt, or that's what I'm saying, because, I mean, it's clearly beyond ministerial the work that they do, and it's vital to the work of the city. So I think there's a really good argument that it would be exempt. So that'd be something to think about. I know like some cities will have, you know, they'll have their city clerk do it, and their assistant's clerk do non-exempt. So they don't run into overtime situations with that. They'll make the call and say, hey, city clerk, this part of your duties.
Yeah, that'll be a council decision if they want to make it exempt or non-exempt. I think we would have a better chance with hiring people with, making an hourly wage, but it's not safe. You could make it a salary position, I suppose.
And the candidate you choose may end up having a preference for it as well. Where they come in and say, this is what I prefer, this is my proposal.
Don't you believe that that's advertised as one position and that's how it should stay rather than change?
Yeah, it can, but you don't, I mean, you've advertised it as an open position, and I think there are certain things within the terms and conditions of employment that you as a deliberative city council body still can negotiate on, and I think we could build some flexibility into that. And that, you know, really, it may be that this person is going to come in and say, you know, I really would like to do it hourly, and here's why. So that may be something for you to consider. I mean, it becomes fair negotiating, and that's why they allow you to do closed session on issues like this. I think you've got the broad framework nailed down and have that set out effectively and
So I like the pay scale. I like how it's drawn out. Like you said, you can clearly see where you're going to start and where you're going to max out and where maybe you need to pursue other certifications or what it might be. My question on that is, how do we factor in things like benefits? Because to date, that's been factored then into the hourly wage, is my understanding. So if you have this scale out there, does that become, you know, more of a lump sum type deal? I mean, as an exempt, that's how it looks to me.
Well, the handbook says, has it laid out already for as far as health insurance and things like that? What other, what are you referring to as far as what benefit they --
How would that impact pay scale if they chose our benefits?
Does that, you know, let's say you have a single person on, we, I've forgotten already, does that employee have the option of putting family benefits on there, which would be much more expensive than a single person, and that's --
They do, that I did about a year ago.
Huh?
I did it about a year ago.
But I pay for it. Yeah. But I pay for it. I pay for my girls.
But your basic coverage is the employee.
Yeah.
Okay.
But you have the right to do it.
Yes, yes, you have the right to do it, and we chose to. It was better for us.
Let me clarify that. Can a city employee get family coverage or family health coverage now?
Yes.
Full coverage?
Yeah. Scott, if you don't mind saying, I mean, you added, you went from a single to a family.
Yeah, but I didn't go all the way.
But you're paying part of yours.
Yeah, I'm paying. I have my full insurance on me. We did the math, and it was better for our family to put my two girls on this policy than leave them on with Dani at the school. Dani is still insured by the school. She has to be. That's part of her contract. So she had to stay, but we could move the girls around. They're paying, the school is paying her in lieu for the girls, and so that dollar amount was higher than what we're having to pay to insure the girls here. So it was a no-brainer for us.
It's in the city handbook. It says you can.
Yeah, and that's when we looked into it, when it came insurance renewal time, we were looking through the handbook, and it clearly states, you know, that the insurance will be provided to the full-time employee and family members at their discretion, at their cost. And of course, at their, yes. And it is at a cost. Sharon is, you know, basically hands me a bill every month. I get my paycheck and a bill for insurance, so.
Yeah, and we discussed the rates at the time and everything, and it's like, it's in there, but you have the right to do it.
And our insurance is extremely reasonable unless you would happen, I would imagine, to hire someone who has a lot of problems. It's, the insurance guy says it's probably one of the best plans in the state as far as being low-cost, so.
They have access to IFRS 2.
To me, the benefits as far as health insurance and stuff like that, those are already preset. That wouldn't affect wage. I mean, we offer benefits, and that's what they are.
So it's just benefits are added on to their wage?
Yeah. Now, if you're referring to something like wanting to give them or negotiate with them step increases based upon getting their municipal clerk certification quicker or something like that?
No, I just meant health benefits. You covered my question. Thank you.
But you bring up a good point, Charlie. What if that comes up? What if the candidate asks about, you know, I get my clerk certification in a year versus three? Do I get a step increase? Do I get a dollar amount increase? Do I get a percentage increase?
And how does that coincide?
If you have a system like that where it's across a step like that, and somebody came in as an example, where they're a clerk in Iowa and they have 10 years' experience and they have their certifications, I think that it's reasonable to say, if you were here for 10 years, where would you be on this scale? You know? And then negotiate it from there. That is reasonable. That's how most cities do it at hiring processes. To say we're going to revert you back to the very beginning is, you can do it. I'm not saying you can't do it as a city, but you lose that ability for that person to take good people away from other positions to move them here.
I just wanted to say, I was going through emails today, and that's a constant topic on ClerkNet, you know, what's the wage whenever there's a new clerk hired? And I can tell you, across the state, wages for a clerk will range from $12 an hour in some cases of tiny towns, even with certification, up to in the mid $50,000 range.
I'd love to know.
You know, for clerks that have been there for a while, you know, and that's going to be your range, and it really is dependent on where that town is in the state. You can look at the names of those towns, and if you know at all where they are, that tells you the entire story. So farther you move away from Cedar Rapids to the north, not towards Waterloo, but straight north, the wage will decrease, and then it'll start to pick up as it gets to Waterloo and Dubuque, and then it will decrease as it goes farther north. So, for one example.
So where does this come from?
Those are standard wages at an administrative level for cities our size. They are about just 2% between, which is a normal step between wages, right at 2% to 2.5% is cost of living between steps.
Okay, so where does this come from?
Generated, I think, so. But it's based upon -- But it's based upon standard wages.
Where's the standard wages coming from? I, I don't know.
Administrative assistance I got from multiple cities. The closest one, city of Cedar Rapids, city of Robbins, those areas like that, but I used Iowa cities.
Do you use smaller cities too?
Robbins was probably the smallest.
Does, does it feel illegal, whatever municipality puts out a sheet like that, don't they?
It comes, it comes through ClerkNet, there's, one of the clerks has generated this spreadsheet.
I couldn't compare the clerk of Cedar Rapids to us, I had to use administrative assistance.
Yeah, yeah. If, if I had some time, I could get on ClerkNet and probably, I deleted them all now because of all the, there was seven, eight years' worth of und deleted emails on that computer, but anyway.
Clerk, ClerkNet has one.
Well, it's, it's, one of the clerks basically asked the question and it was a rolling answer. She got literally a couple hundred responses from cities around Iowa and she just put together a spreadsheet. So it's there. All I'd have to do is ask the question, you know, can, can you send me that spreadsheet of clerk wages from Iowa? Somebody will pick it up.
Do you think they have the ability to funnel that down to a city such and such a size?
They, they were.
This geographic area?
Every one of them had the population of the town listed, they listed the town with population.
I've seen it, so I know it exists.
Yep, and then.
Does it go by geography also?
Not necessarily, but it wouldn't take you too long to narrow it down to the eastern end of the state, just knowing where these towns are. But you're a ways from needing it, but I, I know I can get it for you, you know.
Well, the, the wages there have a, obviously a range of scales there, you could reduce it down so the base wage starts lower, but it will definitely, lowering the wage will definitely affect your application pool. So the grade that was suggested was just based upon the current wage of the clerk. Other questions or discussion about the job description or pay?
Just fresh from my memory, what was her salary now?
Uh, eighty-nine-one is her current rate.
And that's how many years of employment?
Eighteen.
Took her plaques on with her, so I can't tell you when she got her certification, please hang it on the wall and say.
I've got a, on the job title, I've got a question.
Yes.
What is this certification required after six months?
Yeah, I can change that too, but in the very back, under required special qualifications, I put the certified municipal. Yeah, the notary was within six months and then the certification, her municipal clerk certification for the applicant, I put three years.
Yeah.
I put the three years on appointment, based upon the conversation we had with Sharon. She said that that was reasonable for not only getting it done, but also being a good clerk takes two to three years to get it up going and really know what you're doing. Because not only doing a budget, but the budget for the city that you're doing was her comment, so that was based upon that.
So then this certification and that's for the...
That was the, I, I can put both in this area here, but that was, just saying, it's the same reason.
I'm going to write on my own notary, it's for my benefit.
The previous job description left it as an option, which it probably shouldn't be, it's, it's just a fee to pay and you can be a notary, so.
Yeah.
We should have them. I'm a notary, you know, but I mean.
It's beneficial for the people to come in here.
It is, you can charge for it if you want to, but it's.
It's nice, it's a good thing for an AM.
It should be.
Or AM, I should say.
There you go.
Could be AM too.
I didn't have any specific comments, I think it's much more concise than the previous one. That one had a lot of redundancies in there, so. Painted a clearer picture of what the duties.
I just.
What's the, what's the revised version versus this? I got my email at eight-thirty this morning and I can't read it all on the phone, so.
Okay. And that, the new one does incorporate about twenty percent of this one into it. I used a lot of the cities.
I think it's more than twenty, I compared the two, it's all there.
It does, the, the, some of this stuff was aged. I used some of this stuff from, an updated one from Cedar Rapids and some from other cities. But a lot of this stuff is all right, it just, a little bit was out of date.
So am I to assume that the pay scale is not something we would be approving tonight? Because that would affect not just this position, but all city positions. So we, would that have to hit an agenda specifically?
I don't think that's something you have to say tonight, it would, I, I think that before we put the job description out, we need to know whether or not we're putting a pay scale in there or if we're putting in a salary. I would discourage just saying salary based upon or commensurate with experience and stuff like that. That does turn people away from the position. So I think the pay scale is a good way to do it. And then we don't also have the annual discussion of whether or not, what the raise is going to be or debate on it or anything like that. It puts it into place.
Are they going to have a six-month probationary period?
We do a year at the.
I was going to say, I, I feel at least they have six months.
Six months, okay.
That's that title, I just threw that out, I'm not saying the year's bad.
From a legal standpoint, does a six-month probationary period really do anything?
My position on that is Iowa's still an out-of-home employment state.
Is there any good after three months?
Right.
I mean, I think it's ridiculous we're at Will State.
Yeah, you, you, I would call it an introductory period and not a probationary period.
Okay.
And the introductory period, even at the completion of that, that does not change the, the nature of out-of-home employment, so.
We do a year because the first six months they're in training. And then the six months they're what we call solo time, but that's where we do it. So the nature of this position maybe wouldn't require a year, but.
But they serve at the pleasure of the council and they're appointed by the council, so it's.
I, I just threw that six months out, I'm not saying it's a must.
I, I think for tonight, we probably need to decide the posting date and then, you know, have a motion that says we are replacing it and then move forward with the, the process. So obviously, doing this expense and funds, so the council needs to approve. We've, we've got the resignation portion done, now we need to approve for the actual replacement position and the process that we put that.
But as you said, we can't post the position without deciding the pay scale. Is that correct?
Yeah, it's, posting this stuff is going to.
Yes.
At least the electronic version of it, you can skip it, but then I, I think that will have a detrimental effect on the people that apply.
Does anybody have any problems with this pay scale? Let's talk about the pay scale, because we don't have a clerk right now. It's time to get this going.
So what was it, what was it she made, eighteen ninety-one, was that eighteen dollars an hour?
Eighteen dollars ninety-one cents an hour.
Okay.
Yeah. And she was eligible for overtime, which she did utilize overtime.
Yeah.
So with this pay scale, is this just for the clerk or is this involved with the city employees? Is this universal, how's it work?
The pay scale, we, we looked at doing it for updating job description and attaching it to all city employees. There's only two, John wasn't applied to it last year, but we, we didn't get it done. I would suggest that we, after we get this taken care of, because this is the urgent issue, is updating public works directors' job description, put it in the same format and classification types and also attach a pay scale to that as well. And make it standard.
Would that be a different pay scale?
No, it'd be the same, but we standardize across the board.
I'm a little foggy on what qualifies as steps yet.
The steps are based upon, normally are based upon annual reviews, job performance, that type of thing. You can attach them to other things like certifications and stuff like that. When you hit the top end of your pay scale, then you would not be eligible for any more increases unless you got moved up for some change in job classification. Or you could also receive cost of living only at that point. But that is your, range of your position.
Does everybody feel that a new hire should start out in a grade eight? Do we need to do that in order to get somebody?
Which is very competitive. I mean, she left at eighteen ninety-one, you're bringing them in just under that. So I think it's competitive wage.
The biggest problem for us is, we're in Lynn County. We're a small community, I understand that. Cedar Rapids, Marion's ten minutes away. How are we going to draw somebody in that's good, has experience? How are we going to draw them away from Cedar Rapids?
And we want longevity, we want.
And we want somebody to stay. Let's just bite the bullet, you know. You've got to pay for good people.
We use badge, you get just what you pay for.
Exactly.
At a grade eight, step one, it would be budgeted, because that's what was budgeted for the current rate. However, if, if you bring somebody in that you increase higher steps because of whatever reason, we, we will go over salary budgets. Yeah, just be aware of that, it is budgeted at the rate of grade eight, step one.
I like this, this is what we have to work. And like you said, they go into the job, if the council changes, they know I'm still going to get paid less.
Well, if you want to move forward, I would suggest that the motion be formed that either allows me or somebody on the council or our other city employee, I don't care who, but to be able to fulfill the hiring process with some latitude. Obviously, these have to be posted. The online process, those emails, or those positions are going to come back with those. Those applications have to be processed, put into a format, sent out to everybody. As far as the testing, that also has to be set up, the, the typing test can be done online, but those other tests have to be formulated. Interviewing, things like that, there's a lot of administrative stuff that has to be put together, your packets for that, questions, limitations on what you can ask and stuff like that. So I don't mind doing it, if you feel more comfortable with having Guy do it. I think he is a full-time employed city, although it is a daunting task and he has other duties, that's fine. But when you formulate the motion to move forward with this for the replacement, just keep in mind, it does need to be done relatively quickly here.
I'm for a certain, you mentioned several other things as far as testing and whatnot, but shouldn't those things be put in place before we're ready to put this in the paper, we're ready to go in two days?
Yeah, I would.
I don't mean, I don't mean to delay it, but, you know, we want to be ready to go when, when an interviewee is there.
Yeah, I would think that if you're ready to move on this, at the quickest that we could post this would be two days.
So you have, you don't have any interview process really set up yet, do we? We're going to need to work on that. Is that going to be ready in two days? Or a week?
Well, are, are we going to start interviewing people right away? Or we got to wait till we get five people in here, whatever?
But I feel we need to have a standardized interview format. I don't care if you do one, last time we handed up two or three a night for out of the hot law. To make it effective for the council's time.
I would think that once we get through the application process, normally you can get down to, you know, five, maybe ten candidates at the most. Probably five or six for this particular position, I'm guessing here, but it could be more. And then usually packets are formulated with just the interview questions standardized and the, you know, the application information. And then normally we have a sheet that says what you can and can't ask a candidate, just as a reference for everybody, so they're all on the same sheet of music. And then some sort of grading system that you utilize with the, with the interview process. So formulating those packets are simply administrative. Normally, an interview team is three people or something to that effect and an odd number usually. So I, I don't think it would be terribly hard to get it all formulated. If the council's decision is in fact to use the entire council, by the time this goes, we could be at five people. So it could be big and we'll stir waiting for a legal opinion whether or not that would have to be a public meeting, which would be very awkward for an interviewee.
When are you anticipating we start interviewing people?
Well, if we post it within the next two days and it's posted for two weeks and then the application process, testing of say the initial five or six candidates and then the interviews, I would say if we hurried, we could do it in three to four weeks.
Do you need a work session? Would that make it easier, like after the job's posted? Schedule a work session to get your interview together and, and your testing material ready, so you all know you're on the same page? Just throwing out there, throwing out an idea.
Probably just worth discussing.
Even if the mayor does most of the legwork on getting it ready, then all of you would be familiar with?
I'd just be interested, a public comment. Your last hiring process, I believe you were the hiring supervisor?
Yeah.
And how many people on your committee level was your process?
We just had two, I think, we went to the, we went to the applications, everybody went through.
They application ranked them.
Right, like, like Chester said, we had.
And then we picked out the, and we picked out the one five we wanted to.
I understand, something.
Whatever, and then that's when the two people.
And that was who?
Interviewed them, or you, does that have three people?
Yeah, when you interviewed.
We didn't, we never had.
You don't have to tell me the names by title though, who were the two people?
I, Chester, you were one.
Okay, so a council member and.
And I was one and.
I was interviewed by two council members and you.
Yeah, and I'm not sure who the council member was.
It's Hitler.
Hitler, yeah, okay.
So the mayor to council, those three, so the mayor to council member, so not quorum, but.
Right, and then we took that to the council with recommendations.
Okay.
Yeah, and then, and we listened to the council. I mean, they, they got to look at two and, and we did change a couple. I think we did change a couple on the sheet that we had that weren't quite right, because.
Because they couldn't get bonded, we had to redo it because they could.
But we didn't have all five.
No, we didn't have everybody there.
And, you know, we just did three.
So that was just a, like a regular interview then? All right, no public meeting, no nothing you just said?
Okay, cool, that's cool.
And you think that might be acceptable, non-quorum, no city business, administrative only, conduct the interview and we'd be okay with?
I, I think so, I'd want to look at that though to be sure, because it's still something.
We just had everybody ranked them and then we picked out the, how they were ranked. We just had everybody ranked them, and then we picked out the, how they were ranked, and they interviewed the high group that was ranked.
Everybody ranked them, though?
Yes.
Right, every council member. I think there was one candidate that, the three of the five, you know, that we as a council, or, or interviewing group didn't choose, but the other three did. So we pulled that person in and interviewed it, because it was a three-two.
Right.
You know, so that's how we do it.
Be acceptable again?
That's acceptable to me.
This is Councilman Trump?
I don't know what everybody else thinks, but...
Okay, so we don't have to, we don't necessarily have to name the names tonight, but the mayor and two council people.
Right, any, any, I don't care who, that's immaterial to me.
And by the time that, by the time we do it, we may have another council person to choose from, I doubt it, but I suppose it is possible.
Because I'm gonna have my, everybody's gonna have their say in their thoughts.
Right.
What's when they rank them, and again, the final vote. So no matter who we are, you're gonna have two opportunities to say, A or A, Joe Blow, or whoever happens to be.
And no one will be hired without council approval.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, so then, I think we're real close here. Other than, as far as the replacement process, we, if we're gonna do it, we'll have to have some latitude, including the expenditure of funds potentially for posting and things like that. I don't know if there's a cost, but it would be minimal, but whatever administrative costs are associated with replacing the position.
That should be well within my spending. If you have, incur a cost, I can just pay for it with, on my credit card. As far as approving.
Okay. Other discussion before we call for a motion on this then?
Before a motion, do we want to figure out pay scale?
All right, discussion on the pay scale then?
I'm comfortable with starting, like you said, grade eight, step one. Starting with, like you said, it's budgeted already.
That means that the, the posted scale would be, and, and I can run it out to what it would be annually, but the posted scale would be a grade eight, step one, eighteen fifty-eight an hour, with a top range of twenty-four fifteen per hour. So I do the rough math in my head, but the top range would just be right under fifty thousand, around forty-eight or something like that. That's just short of twenty-five bucks an hour. And potentially, it'd take them somewhere between ten and twelve years to get there. If you give to them every year, based upon, they'd have to have good reviews and meet all their criteria.
That's an investment I'm willing to make.
That answered the question.
It did, thank you.
So is this something we can attach to the updated job description with a motion tonight?
You, you can't. It won't be in the actual job description, other than at the very top, it just tells you what grade it is. That just sets this administrative information. That way, if you change it, it doesn't change the job description itself. If you wanna include, as part of all this hiring process, updating your job description and attaching it to his, we can do that at the same time. It's more of an administrative thing, it doesn't really have to be in, be in there, we can work on that as well. Other questions on that? Councilman Trump? Okay, then, I would seek a motion to go ahead and approve the replacement of the city clerk for Al Burnett, and the replacement process that's needed to do that, even if it expands minimal funds. And unless anyone else wants to do it, allowing the mayor to proceed with the replacement process in conjunction with the public works director.
So I'll move.
Move by Sean.
I'll second that.
Second by Menson.
I'm not gonna repeat all that crap.
Right, I hope we can watch the video if we need to get that formed up. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? And the motion carries. One thing that is associated with this, which I wanna discuss and see if you wanna move with it as well, is with these postings and some of the things that are gonna happen with this process, and certainly with what's gonna happen with day-to-day business, is we may be required, at least entitled, to have a temporary clerk named, or only other city employee, and I'll ask for your legal opinion on this in a moment, too, but our only other city employee is Guy. So do you think we need action on this as well, associated with it?
I just wonder, is there anybody else, is there another clerk around here that could come in and give us a hand? I mean, I'm thinking about Guy's capabilities here, by the time we get a put-as-stone, whatever, we need something done, office clerk type, he's gonna be stretched pretty thin.
Do we need a city employee named in name?
Yeah, title, temporary, he's our temporary clerk, but...
Have some, another city clerk come in and help with the data tech and the day-to-day. I think that'd be fine. The other question is, has anybody contacted the clerk and lined anything up?
Yeah, I talked to some adjacent cities. I, I worked part-time in Robbins as a police officer, and I talked to their, their city clerk and their deputy clerk, because they use the same software we do for financials. And they are willing to assist, at least the deputy clerk, to come over and assist us on a limited basis. And then also, item five C will come into play with this a little bit, if we do approve some contractual assistance, because I had that same discussion with Sharon as to coming in to assist on a contractual basis here and there, so I think we'd be outright. But I do think that we need at least in name to have a clerk. And I'm only thinking of that because of the hiring process and potentially the naming of a, a new council person. So if we say, our acting clerk is gonna submit this before an election, or whatever it would take. And I'm not sure we can name A. We already have a process in place to pay Robbins for billing services on the utility side and stuff like that. So paying them for temporary services is not, I don't think that'd be an issue. But it may not hurt, so you could at least sign a document that says acting clerk, and get something posted for us. And you have the ability to expend funds.
I move we appoint Guy to be a temporary city clerk.
I'll second that.
Oh, I'm sorry, move by Trump and second by Saracen. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries, Guy.
That's my...
Congratulations.
Yeah, do you wanna do?
Yeah, thanks.
It's my lifelong goal.
Okay, then, with that said also, five C is discussed and approved items for contractual employment, in a discussion with Sharon. She has plans for her retirement. I won't go into them in a public meeting, but she didn't have the ability to do anything for us, not only in full-time, but even, maybe even not even part-time, but hours here and there assisting us with major items that come up, training or something like that in the future. She would be able to assist us with, she said. So if we did get in a pinch, we could call upon her, not right away. It's not like she's got some plans that she's gonna be doing, but it would probably be easiest if we just did a small contract. We have some one-page stuff we use in other locations as a contractual employee, and legal, I'm sure, can assist us with that, but it may be a good idea. Chu, the salary employee, only, of course, I'm not salary, but hourly employee with no benefits or anything, go ahead.
I think we put something in place with Kevin Chu. When I got my certificates, and he was not our affidavit operator anymore, we, there was something in a meeting, I'd have to go back and look, you know, we'd have to try and find the minutes, but there was, I don't know what we did. But we did something so that if we...
Like a ten ninety-nine or something, that it just put him in there for a...
If I was on vacation and the...
Contractually, you did.
We'd leave a hole in it, he could come down and, and take it.
For a temporary.
So we may have a template there already, but I don't remember what it is. We'd have to look it up, so.
It, uh... It may be beneficial to just have that in place. My only suggestion would be at or above her current wage, and I say above just because she's not receiving any benefits or anything, but that's the pleasure of the council. Would you open any input?
If I may, it's gonna get serious really fast, because the first is coming. We gotta read water meters. I have no idea how to load the route into the meter reader. I have no idea how to unload it in Data Tech and generate water bills. Have to have help this week, have to.
Is she available?
I got the impression, impression that she was...
It was not right away.
Yeah, I won't go into her personal life, but I didn't get the impression that she was gonna be around this week, but...
But she did say Robbins uses the same software, and they can do a lot remotely.
And Brenda Coggan has Data Tech also, and I know Brenda.
And the Data Tech support was very good.
Can you use the water system remotely?
I don't know.
I think Data Tech can do it. I think, I think if we, if I call tomorrow and put Data Tech on notice that we have no one to do this, I think they could call me on the first, help me get it loaded, and then we could call back. Well, yeah, and there's a lot of things that all I probably would need is a prompt, and I know she has a punch list, as it will, even when she does it, that she pulls out and reads. I'll try and find that, you know, maybe I could figure it out from there. But I've never been in that software, ever. I have no idea what it looks like.
I think that's a good idea, though, about calling data point and telling them, well, with anybody else, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, she said it was just their standard support number. She didn't have any particular contact that she...
No, she takes whoever, whoever she gets, but, yeah. I know that much, and EC Cog could possibly send somebody to, you know, if we need somebody in person, but I don't know, I won't know that till I try it. Yeah, that'll, that's gonna be the challenge coming up this week, is reading the water meters.
Yeah, Councilman Trump?
Some of the Robbins, some women are helped. Is that remote help, or is there s...
I think that they would do either for us. They came down to it, after we're done with business this evening, I'll formulate an email with Liz's contact information and Lori's, and say where we're at, and, and put everybody on it so you can get an idea of it, and then that'll kind of, I'll put you as named as... Yeah, contact as acting clerk, since that's solidified now, then everybody can kinda get up to speed. So I'll leave that at the pleasure of the council, then on five C, any interest in that, or do you...
I think it's a good safety then. We don't necessarily have to use it, but she was definitely willing, and if we can be agreeable on terms, that's something I think we should pursue.
Getting the contract put together is probably not the issue. You'll probably have to decide on the rate, if you can do it, that's probably the least thing.
Well, like you said, she's an employee, no benefits. So, yeah, her, her wage she left on, or left out, I don't, I think we should pay her more than that.
Well, and if we're looking at this chart, you know, she'd be eight, you know, approximately step four, she had the eight years in. So that's at twenty dollars and forty-three cents, so I think we need to be somewhere around there. I mean, that would be consistent, but normally, contract stuff is higher than the standard wage.
Yeah.
We could always go with that, and if she says, I don't know, then we'll renegotiate it, yes.
She was very agreeable. What the, round out a dollar amount, forty, what you...
Oh, was it twenty?
Twenty forty-three, is that right?
Yes.
Before you round, yes, twenty dollars forty-three cents an hour.
We round that up to twenty-one.
Twenty-one, even.
It's fine with me.
Councilman Trump? Twenty-one.
We'll be lucky to get somebody.
Okay.
Let's be honest.
Okay, so we'll get that put together, and we'll either find what you have, or we'll use an existing contract with the basic language on there, and then we'll get that put to legal. All right, very good, and I'll get that formulated right away.
Do you need a motion on that, or are we...
Yes, it will.
I move that we put together a contract at forty-one dollars per hour to extend to Sharon Robinson for assistance in her city clerk.
Move by Saracen?
I'll second that.
Second by Menson. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries, thank you. All right, I did also kind of table that, but any other public comment? Mr., I would like to talk to you afterwards, if you wait for a moment, is that all right? Unless you have a public comment?
Put something in writing, so we can resolve this thing.
Oh, for the clerk?
I have no idea, so...
Any, any public comment, though, for this evening?
I think you got your hands full.
Yes, sir. I agree with that. Anything else? Legal?
No, I will notify the, and get your contact info, notify the election officer with Lynn County, and say you're the clerk designated for that, okay?
One more time around, have we covered a lot? Anything else, Councilman Menson?
No, I'm good.
Fine, thank you.
All right, Councilman Trump?
I'm fine. Is this the one we're gonna adopt, this pay scale?
At, at least the grade eight for the start and finish salary for that. The portion on the bottom was a suggestion. I don't think anyone wants to implement changes to salaries for mayor council, so that was a suggestion that was put on there originally, so not that portion, but certainly the grade eight for posting this, so. All right, given that, then I would seek a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
Move by Menson.
I'll second.
Second by Saracen. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Thank you so much. I know we've had a lot of special meetings, but I think we're real close on this. Appreciate you coming up.